We all set? This is the Common Council meeting being held Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. The meeting is called to order at 7:04. Would you please call the roll?
Elder Person Juz Wiki?
Present.
Elder Person Bailey?
Present.
Elder Person Castner?
Present.
Elder Person Akers?
Present.
Elder Person Sarian?
Present.
Item B, opening prayer. We have Pastor Vic.
Good evening. Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this council and this meeting. Pray that you bless the proceedings, help wise decisions to be made. Pray that you protect our city, our first responders, and give us a healthy, good month. And until the next time we get together, in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Item C is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we all hold one second?
Yes, I was a little confused, but we're okay.
Yelled at by the mayor.
Scolded.
It was bothering me, too.
What's that?
Talking in the hall.
Another development in my district. Two on 99.
Are your lights off?
Mine isn't. Second, we changed a little bit, you saw that? Just changed some? Not much, driveway, road. Road. These are the people that are talking to me, the condo group there.
All right. I apologize for that. I just wanted to kind of... Okay, did we do the Pledge of Allegiance? We did. Item D, approval of the August 15th, 2023 Common Council minutes. Entertaining a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E, approval of September 5th, 2023 Special Common Council Minutes. Entertaining a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
By Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Juz Wiki, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carry. I guess, is there citizen commentary this evening? I want to kind of go through that if there... Is there anything on there? Before we get into presentation, so... Well... Are you here for a specific item? Want to speak now?
Just item 13.
Okay. So you're item 13? You're the only person on there, so if we can wait until then, that would be great, okay? Moving along to Mayor's Report. F1 is Presentation of the Status of the North-South Transit Enhancement Project. Milwaukee County's Plan Rapid Bus Route, Transit Bus Route, Along the 27th Street Corridor Connecting Glendale, Milwaukee, Greenfield, Oak Creek, and Franklin, two jobs. Name is that? Okay.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is David Locra. I'm with Milwaukee County Transit. I'm a Transportation Manager. And with me are some of my team members to help make the north-south transit enhancement come to fruition. And I'll tell you a little more about that. But Milwaukee County Transit, we're countywide. We operate in 17 of the 19 municipalities across the county with a fleet of 316 buses and workforce of about 700 operators and then another 300 support staff, from mechanics to people in the office that make plans. I hail from being a bus driver myself back in 2005. Kept my nose clean, and I'm just very thankful to be here. So with that, what we've been working on these past few years is implementing Bus Rapid Transit. That's what BRT stands for. It's not the Brat or the Bart. It's a Bus Rapid Transit. And we implemented our first one on East-West Wisconsin Avenue and Blue Mound Road in cities of Milwaukee and Wauwautosa. And what we're looking at to do now is take kind of the proof of concept from that new BRT line and apply it to our busiest route in the system. And this is the 27th Street Corridor pictured up on the screen. The purple line is what operates on 27th Street today. And through, it was very robust ridership pre-pandemic. And then during the pandemic, when our entire ridership basically went down to 50% of its 2019, this was always the route that rose to the top. So people depend on it day in and day out to get to and from important things, whether it's school jobs, the local grocery store, the Walmart on 27th and Ohio. All these people rely on this service daily. And we really wanted to take what was an existing route and use the tools and trades of Bus Rapid Transit to improve this service and improve its reliability so that you know, more often than not, if you stand at your BRT station or bus stop, every 10 minutes, you can depend on a bus to be there to get you to your next point of destination. So a quick word about the north-south 27th Street Corridor. What we're looking at is today's purple line, very much mimics that. Goes all the way from Bay Shore up in Glendale, goes through city of Milwaukee, then through Greenfield, Oak Creek, and Franklin. And through all of that, it's basically an 18-mile corridor. And each of those dots on the map represents a bus stop or a station pair. And we're looking at 33 of those dots, so it's 33 stations each way. And the goal is to have a bus arrive every 10 minutes. Now, today's purple line is every 13 minutes. But what you might not know is that delay, whether it's through a long interaction of the fare box, sitting in traffic, at an extra red light, you know, that 13 minutes between buses can easily become 15, 17, 20 minutes, and then you have buses chasing each other. And what we want to do is use BRT to make it more consistent and more reliable. So again, it's an 18-mile corridor, and it bridges five cities. And in planner circles, we like to do a buffer, a half-mile buffer of what the line is on the map and say, who lives within a half-mile of that? And you see 118,000 residents. It's 73% people of color. And 27, sorry, 20%, that's one in five, is a household without a car. And that's the stat that speaks most to me because it means people do rely on that service already. And the rest is all what those people are relying on, getting to the jobs, the businesses, the schools, and the grocery stores within the corridor. So why now? So the East-West BRT, it's our Connect One with MCTS. We just launched it this past June. On June 5th, we had a groundbreaking ceremony for the launch of service. And so we've had real good success with this. As far as ridership, it's 3,600 average daily rides in a single weekday, 3,600. And when it kicked off in June, it was only at 2,400, which was already over the pre-existing gold line, which it sought to replace. That same section was about 1,900 rides a day in 2019, pre-pandemic. So full disclosure, we have free rides on this route right now, so check it out. It's probably boosting the ridership a little bit, not going to lie. But if you happen to be in Wauwautosa or Milwaukee and you just want to try it to see what it's like, it is free into spring of 2024. And the other reasons we're pursuing this now is the bipartisan infrastructure bill. That's $1.2 trillion on the federal level. If we don't try to bring some of that money to a project here, it's just going to go to a project in some other city and some other county. So we want to do our best on the county side to bring those federal dollars here to make it work for us on the local level. So BRT, if you haven't had a chance to see our current line on Wisconsin and Blue Mound, these are some pictures to kind of give you a lay of the land. When I do talk about Bus Rapid Transit and we look at this 18-mile corridor, please understand that we're not proposing some kind of road reconstruction project where we're tearing up and we're paving a new road and we're laying new pipe or anything like that. This is very targeted construction. What we're doing is those 33 dots on the map, it's essentially 66 very fancy bus stops. And each bus stop looks like one of the BRT stations there with that yellow strip. It emulates a light rail platform, very much like a streetcar. Some people like to refer to Bus Rapid Transit as light rail without the rails. And it is a similar kind of mode of transportation. Instead of rails, we use dedicated lane striping to give a bus a dedicated lane. And we use the elevated platforms to kind of emulate light rail. And we have an off-board fare collection system so that you spend less time paying at the fare box. You've already bought your fare before you even get on. And these things in tandem, they help the bus to not compete with congestion, move faster when they are moving. And then when they are stopped to board people, the boarding process is much faster. So during the pandemic, we actually launched a feasibility study with Milwaukee County and Sewer PAC, the Southeastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. And Sewer PAC did a great job during the pandemic, reaching out to each of the municipalities and the neighborhood groups to kind of figure out, you know, broadly speaking, what would enhanced transit look like in the corridor. But that was during the pandemic, so we've decided to kickstart this effort and let everybody know, DPWs and common councils and elders and electives, where are we now and what are the next stages? So right now, we're engaging the FTA to work on pursuing a federal grant. And to make that happen first, we're in the environmental review process. And we're also taking many of the very neat things in that feasibility study and saying, well, that looked great on paper, but how's it going to work? So that's what we would like to do when we engage each of these communities and each of you as stakeholders. And then it's aggressive, but we're looking at 2026, '27 for construction. And if all thing goes according to that timeline, service in 2028. So the funding, this is a $148 million project, and that's only capital cost. The operations cost is separate. The county budget as allocated to run Milwaukee County Transit tends to hover around $160 million. We're proposing that it would still be around $160 million once this was implemented. But we do need that capital cost to make this, well, to build it. So 80%, we're looking for federal dollars, and the 20% is going to be a local match. And happy to address any questions on that later. With East-West, it was a similar model. The 20% local match essentially went to the buses, which we would be behoven, behoven? To buy and purchase anyway, because you need buses regardless of the system that we're operating. And here's just a breakdown of the federal funds we've pursued so far and will pursue as this process continues. And these are the timelines that we're looking at. And right now is very critical because as we're roughing out our design, creating something on paper that will work even better than the feasibility study, those decisions need to be made in this next year. And we'll start to be looking for county, county board approval for these items later next year, hopefully summer. So we want to be able to get all the feedback and input so that... The final design always works best when the earlier versions of that design were really thought out, so we're not changing things at the last minute. So outreach is definitely going to inform this. We want this to reflect each community that it serves. Otherwise, we're not doing our due diligence as county stewards of this asset. And for that, Diane Kissler is with our team on county outreach, public outreach.
Thank you, David. So I'm Diane. I'll share a little bit about the outreach we've been doing so far. Our approach has been to have consistent messaging, but really tailored for each community. You know, it's going to look different in Greenfield. Some of the things that we've done in Greenfield so far, as we started with meeting with city staff, we met with Jeff and Christie. We've also met with WISDOT staff as a key stakeholder for the portion of 27th Street that goes through Greenfield. We've met with, we're meeting with you here today. We've also met with County Supervisor Kathy Vincent as well to hear her thoughts on the project. We also have, we went to participate in the Greenfield Farmers Market in July. So that was fun to get out and talk to people. And that's a photo that you see on the right, a couple of photos. Just had some conversations with folks in the community. And we've also been engaging with the 27th Street bid. This has been an important stakeholder. Met with Tara Cavazos, met with the board. And we are definitely seeing high engagement from the business community. And so that's something we're considering as we move forward. And so if you guys, if you will think about if there are any other key organizations or stakeholders we should be speaking with at this time, this really is the time. So we're open to any suggestions. And I'll invite David back up for the last bit.
Yeah, because we definitely want everyone's feedback and input on this. And this is just the targeted, this is how the line on the map is in Greenfield. And some of those things, we are looking at, you know, certain sections might have bus lanes. And those bus lanes could take any form at this point. It could be as basic as painting the roadway with some signs, or it could be something that deters traffic a little more, whether it's, you know, a vertical separation of some kind, an extra curb. But again, it has to reflect the needs of the community, and that's our ultimate goal with this. So with that, that's my presentation. Thanks for giving me the time. I'm happy to take any questions if there's time for that as well.
I have a couple of questions. So you're saying it's not going to be major construction. So does that mean that on our section of 27th Street, there's three lanes each way? Because it's not a parking lane out there. So does that mean there's only going to be then two-car lanes each way?
So that's, oh, that's something that we're working on as we engage each stakeholder. And WISDOT, and in this, in these here parts of 27th, much of that is state trunk highway. So what we are looking to do where it makes sense is if there are three lanes and they're all traffic, let's see if we can dedicate the two lanes for traditional traffic, and we'll take the outside running lane for bus traffic. And if you need a comparable, we do have the dedicated lanes on Wisconsin Avenue from downtown Milwaukee out to Holly Road. And in that configuration, it's one lane of traditional traffic and one bus lane. The nuance there is there is a parking lane as well. And we are working with a traffic modeler, you know, to really see how that would work in advance. We don't want to do anything without, you know, real forethought and traffic study.
I'm just thinking, because I have to go that route every morning to drop off a child at daycare on 27th Street. And there is, especially, you know, in rush hour traffic, there is so much traffic that's, you know, going down 27th Street to get to the freeway right there. And there's so many, so many businesses there that, you know, people are always turning right. So then if they can't go in that lane, I can just see that middle lane, which is now going to be the right lane for traffic, being constantly backed up because people are in that lane then and making their right turns. And there's so many, I mean, every couple of feet, there's a new entrance out there. And I can just see that that's going to, while it's be great for the buses, I don't know how great it would be for the traffic on that street.
And I know you know that this concern was expressed at the 27th Street bid.
Yeah, there's just, there's just so many entrances there that that really concerns me. And I guess my other concern is, you said you have some east-west, you know, on Wisconsin Avenue, and I forget what the other one, Blue Mound, I think you said. Are there any plans to do that, say, like on Layton Avenue? Because, you know, we have a small stretch of it, but we don't have anything going east or west connecting to 27th on our side. And I think it would be extremely beneficial to get something on Layton where it's a busier street or something like that. I mean, we could go down to the airport or the lakefront or, you know, how far you do it. But I think that getting something on this side of town, too, to connect to it would be helpful for... There's a lot of...
Certainly. So to that, I would just throw out there that, like Milwaukee County Transit, and this would be operated by Milwaukee County Transit. This is, you know, a new, it's not so new as it's... It has more optics on it. So like Milwaukee County Transit is kind of used to operating in the background. I like to think of us as kind of the county's best-kept secret. Like, we do have a route that runs east-west on Layton Avenue. It's our Route 55. But if you've just never been inclined to try it, or you didn't need to take your car in for maintenance and you thought to ride the 55 instead, you just might not know about it.
Well, I do know, I just, it doesn't, I live right on Layton, so I just don't see it running, you know, a lot consistently, like in the mornings and that, when I would think people would need it if they're trying to get to work.
Certainly. No, I appreciate that feedback.
That's all I had.
Just a couple of questions. With regard to the local match, is no expectation for Greenfield to contribute anything to this project, right? Operations, maintenance, construction costs?
Oh, no, this is, this is all county.
Is Ascension one of the four major medical centers that's referred to? In your, early on it says there's four major medical centers. I was trying to figure out which ones they were. St. Luke's was one. So when you look at the map, the, you know, you kind of, the expectation is that the bus would drive past Ascension and it would kind of go towards some of the growth that's happening in Franklin. But instead, it kind of takes a left on Drexel and goes to IKEA. I'm kind of curious.
I'm surprised that it stops there and doesn't all the, doesn't go all the way back into Oak Creek itself. I mean, you're bringing the north sideline all the way over to Bay Shore. And not that we wouldn't want to see it come back to Greenfield, of course. But stopping there at IKEA just seems like you could have gone just a wee bit further over to Oak Creek.
And...
There's another hospital there. There's our hospital.
There's a medical center of medical care and treatment and all the stuff to get people there and jobs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you said something interesting, too. You said the county operating budget's about $160 million?
For transit. And that includes...
For transit, sorry, I mean...
Yeah, that's for the fixed route and BRT, and then also the paratransit element as well.
And you don't expect that to go up?
Oh.
I mean, because there's been a funding problem for transit, I think, and that's pretty well-recognized for a while.
Yeah, the fiscal cliff, you know, we just had that sales tax increase approval, you know, so we're up to 0.9. But that's for like all of county's budget?
Right, it's 39, I think there's $39 billion, million dollars of surplus this year. And 39 million is about 9 million more than our entire budget for the city, just so you know. And I guess it's supposed to be kind of a blip. It's not going to be consistently 39 million a year. So I just, I was kind of thinking about this. And so back in June of this, not that long ago, like three months ago, I got a, and if the budget's not going up and you're adding the service, and I think it's a great service, Governor, Chief Executive, whatever he was back then, Walker, this was one of his. He supported this, and I think everyone sort of has since. But the lack of funding is a little bit of a concern. Back in June of this year, I got a, Tom Winter, he works with you guys?
Yes, I report to him.
Yeah. On June 28th of 2023, he wrote me an email basically talking about the lack of funding for the county transit. And he said that, in essence, because there isn't enough money, right? The following three routes and two route segments could be targeted for elimination in the 2025 budget. Route 55 on Layton, which provides access to Myers-Cynex and 84 South, actually goes all the way to I-100, I think, or used to, maybe it steps at 92nd now. Route 56, which is on South 43rd Street, provides access to businesses along Miller Parkway. Route 92, which is on 92nd Street, which provides, or dead ends at 84 South. A part of Route 60, which is on 60th Street, which would now not go to Layton, it sounds like. And a segment of Route 76, which is on 76th Street, which provides access to downtown Greendale. So there's going to be more operational expense associated with this project, and it's going to remain relatively stagnant. And there isn't the funding sources to do, to fund what we have. So I'm just kind of curious what the future looks like for the other routes.
Well, I appreciate those questions, and I wouldn't want to lead you astray by coming up with an off-the-cuff answer. But I will say that that email, we reached out to everyone and their mother about that fiscal cliff midsummer, and...
But there's still a fiscal cliff. It's just tempered a little bit because there's a sales tax. But the sales tax is mostly being dedicated towards the pension liability. I mean, that's the first place it has to go. And then it has to go to public safety, I think. So I'm just kind of curious. I'm just kind of curious, because it seems like you're going to have the same, potentially, let's pretend you have the same amount of money, and now you've just added, and it's a super-duper line. I mean, I mean, it gets frustrating for us as a city because Route 55, when it was extended, like five, six years ago, I think, I don't remember when it was. So like, the city has to put in the bus stops. We have to actually pour the concrete, and we have to do all that stuff, which seems a little weird because that's not, it's not really our system. We actually have to shovel the bus stops, which seems a little weird because it's really not our system. We have to pick up the coroplast signs because they don't use metal signs anymore. They just put coroplast signs, you know, that you guys do, and you zip them to the signs, and they blow away, and they get graffitied, and they get written all over, right? And the routes change so often that it's a little, we are, we're already putting money into a system that kind of doesn't have enough money because if we want to have any kind of bus routes, we have to kind of help a little bit. And that gets a little frustrating for me. And then the standards with regard to shelters, because I saw somewhere it's like you guys pay for the shelters and you do all this stuff. But most of the shelters have been removed completely. And as I go through the police reports every day, I see people that, you know, they're resting, they're sleeping basically on the grass next to their bus stop. And people drive by and go, there's somebody sleeping in the grass, or there's somebody sitting somewhere, right? And you go up to them, and it's like, I'm just waiting for the bus. So it does make sense to make the transit system more user-friendly in every way, shape, or form because the existing model doesn't work at all. And it sounds like it can't even be paid for with what we do have. So as long as we don't have to pay for it, and as long as we don't have to contribute towards construction, operation, or maintenance in any way, shape, or form, you're more than welcome to do all that. I would be disappointed, however, if you, if you took away the routes because you plastered the universe with these are the routes that could be cut, that you took away any of the four or five routes that serve us and Greendale.
Well, I certainly appreciate all of that, and...
It's kind of how buses should be, right?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, they should be on time.
Yeah.
They should, you shouldn't have to, you know, you should be able to sit on a bench anyways, even if it's not in the... be able to sit on a bench anyways, even if it's not in a shelter, and not have to, you know, I don't know. Just saying.
No, and I, I appreciate that. And if I could offer, maybe outside this venue, I would love to be able to facilitate maybe something between you, um, Tom Winter and myself, and perhaps some of our leadership staff to, like, really get into each of these issues. Because, you know, our product is service. And if you see gaps in that, we want to be able to fill those and, and rise to the occasion to make things right.
So I think Mr. Winter's a wonderfully human being, and I've, I think I've talked to him on a number of occasions, and there are a couple other people over there that we've talked to on a number of occasions, and they all have very altruistic, pro-transit things, right? And I get it, and I think transit is probably important for some folks. But until you figure out the operation expenses, and that seems to be, that's much higher than my pay grade, that's for sure. Um, I worry that if you put this thing in, it's going to take the, the resources that you still don't have enough of, and it's going to distract from, I don't even want to say the poor service, because I don't want to be derogatory, or the lack of red carpet service that you guys are all striving for, that already exists in the city, um, have it just eliminated, right? If this is designed basically to be a freeway from Bay Shore to IKEA, I mean, I think it serves its purpose. Um, and there are a hundred nineteen thousand people within a half a mile, if that's true. But along that entire route, there's probably close to seven hundred thousand people, or eight hundred thousand people within two or three miles, right? And if those two or three mile people can't even get to the thing, then it's kind of sad. So that's my comment.
Well, I, I do appreciate those comments, and thank you for your candor. Um...
How are the electric buses holding up? I heard that they were all out of service, or many of them were.
Uh, we've already, so there was a battery recall. Um, so we have a fleet of eleven. We already have two with completely revitalized batteries. We're looking to put back into service later next week, so...
So what happens when the buses that are electric powered don't work? Do you take buses from elsewhere and just use those instead?
Uh, we always have a spare ratio of buses that we can put onto the lines as needed, so that we're not robbing from, like, the Route 30 or the 55. No buses on there, and we're only putting it on...
I'm just saying.
Oh, yeah. No, but it's a fair point.
But if all the buses, electric buses have their batteries recalled, then you don't have any buses. So what do you do in that situation?
Give the horses out. Get some horses out there.
Horses?
Yeah. We, we do intend to have a mixed fleet for quite some time, just on the practicality.
Just really quick, I'd like to go back to something. So are there presently any alternatives to the dedicated bus lane? Or maybe in certain sections, or, or you guys are working on it now?
Yeah, yeah. We, we are working on it. So in the feasibility study, it does make notes of like where sewer pack thought the lanes should go, and I'll, you know, it's seventy-nine percent of the route. Uh, but what we're doing at MCTS and the county level now is really deciding where those are. Um, you know, like, meeting with the bid on South 27th Street and also the Alders. Because each community is different. A, a facility might need parking near St. Luke's, you know. So we, we want to be fluid right now in deciding where that should go.
Just one final stupid question. So every time I'm behind a bus, it always says no right turn in front of a bus?
If you violated that, I won't tell anyone.
I never, I never violate it, because I'm always afraid I'm going to get just T-boned by a, a ten-ton bus or something. But if there's only, if there's three lanes on 27th Street now, and the right lane is a dedicated line, lane, right? And if you're in the center lane, you know, and you got to turn right, but the bus is at a stop, you know, because they stop, they don't just stop for, they stop on a schedule, right, kind of?
Mm-hmm.
How do, you can never, so that second lane over, I mean, they got to stop, right, until the bus goes, and there's only two lanes of traffic. So how do they make the right turn? Can they then go into the dedicated bus?
So, so there, it's just like merging into anything else. You know, like, like, it's all businesses down on, like, Oklahoma, down the college. So it's a matter of drivers still have the opportunity to behave well, I hope. You know, get into their lane well in advance before they make the right turn into the drive. And it's, it's the same thing, except now that you do have, uh, the bus to interact with. With ten-minute headways, it does mean that, you know, a bus is going to be at that stop every ten minutes, you know, with some exceptions for bunching when the schedule may, may create, you know, another bus in there at a given time. But, you know, just like getting into any driveway, you merge over and then you make your turn.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, so you're allowed to be in there as a merge and a right turn.
Okay. I just want, I never knew. I just didn't want to violate that sign on the back of the bus. All right. Thank you. Anything else, Scott?
Uh, no, just thank you for your time and your feedback, and happy to facilitate any, any follow-up.
Great, thank you. Anything else from... All right. Automatic reports, sir. Under Mayor's report, I guess, just one thing. We had our car show at Conkle Park. It was, I think, four hundred and thirty to four hundred and fifty cars. It was extremely well-attended, and a number of people came up and said it was one of the best car shows they've ever been at.
It was a beautiful day, and there was cars everywhere.
It's been seven years in a row of spectacular weather.
Don't say that. Don't, because we have more years to come.
Nineteen sixty-seven GTO1, best in class, or best, the Jim Patterson Award, so. All right. Automatic reports, are there any?
Just a quick word. I'm on the tree commission. We met the other day, and, uh, they talked about replacing some of the trees that were damaged, uh, over the year, over this, just this year. And there's forty trees that have been, that are going to be replaced because of snowplow or other damaged car accidents and stuff like that on the right of ways. So that's being done right now. And, uh, they talked about, our city forester talked about, um, how great the, um, treat, the arbiter, the arbiter is in planning, but he also talked about the festival that they had at Conkle Park regarding, uh, the tree commission, so.
Awesome. Anybody else?
I'm hoping the county would hear this, but I'd like to thank them for taking care of the table from the county park, park department on Oak Leaf Trail that goes underneath below the road. It's been painted and removed a year, but it's gone now. I'd like them for that.
I get very critical of the county, but recently, when it comes to their highway departments and their anti-tagging and their attention to detail in the city, they've been doing a spectacular job, honestly, so. Okay, announcements. Um, I guess the one announcement, and this is going to sound sort of facetious based on what happened at the beginning of the council meeting, where I had to walk outside. Um, there's a reassessment going on in the city. We've talked about this, I think, at five or six or seven meetings that I've been at. Um, I've gone, we've had the assessor in here explaining the shift in property tax burden away from commercial office properties towards the residential properties. Um, and I don't want to make another announcement, but if there's, if there's, you know, the need to contact the assessor because you think the price of the home has been unfairly valued, um, they need, you need to do that. It will result in an increase for most residential property owners within the city. Um, Andrew has sat, as I think as a citizen, on the Board of Review, going through valuations and all of those things. I just want to kind of say a couple things. Some of the common questions that I get regarding this is, well, what are you going to do with all the extra money that you're getting from me? There is no extra money that we're getting really from anyone. The levy, as far as the operating budget, can go up a hundred and ten thousand dollars next year. So in our twenty-five million dollar budget, there's about a hundred and ten thousand dollar levy increase. Shared revenue is kicking in this year. I've said in the past that I was, it was wrong. That is certainly going to offset that, and that'll help for three to five years. Um, why don't you charge, why aren't the retailers paying more? It's based on value. It's all based on value. So if a commercial property doesn't go up in value and your house goes up in value, you will pay more, a bigger share or burden of that total taxes collected. There's no way around that. Is this happening, why is this just happening here and not happening elsewhere? It's happening everywhere. Some cities reassess every year, and the values of those homes have skyrocketed. There's a danger to that, because it creates some sort of, creates some kind of instability sometimes. And there's a good thing to do with that, too. But when single-family homes go up dramatically in value and nothing else does, you pay more in taxes, because the burden is shifting to you, because the value of the city, which is now about four billion dollars, um, the value of that four billion dollars is in the residences and not in the commercial property. Historically, when commercial properties were going up in value, and offices were going up in value, medical offices were going up in value, that all provided a benefit to the homeowner, because they, the burden was more shared with them. Um, that's not happening now, and that's not happening everywhere. Um, I've talked to a number of other communities that are going through this, the same thing. And those communities that do reassess every year, the property tax burden has shifted to them already, and their taxes are very high. Well, what about, I, you know, I have a friend that lives in New Berlin. I have, you know, and they don't pay the same kind of, they don't pay the same kind of taxes that the, in Waukesha County that they pay in Milwaukee County. This is true. Milwaukee County is about twenty-five percent of our property tax bill. Okay? Waukesha County isn't anything near that in those communities. The other issue is that Greenfield's worth about four billion, New Berlin's worth six or seven billion. So they can spread whatever it costs them among, among a much bigger tax base. In New Berlin, I was just told, so our water bills are about ninety to a hundred dollars a quarter, generally speaking. In New Berlin, a quarterly water bill is three to four hundred dollars. And in Waukesha, which had a well system, they are now getting Milwaukee water, and Milwaukee water is going to be extremely expensive. It's not just the water, it's all the infrastructure that went in as well. It all costs something, no matter where you live. If you live in an urban area or suburban area, and you want to be, you know, you want police to respond, and you want paramedics to show up and save your life, um, if something bad happens, if you want your streets plowed at an appropriate time by someone who's responsible, it costs something. Um, so I...
And you want a good election run properly, too.
So it's elections. So this is the other thing. Here's another question, and I guess this is under announcements, right, or Mayor's Report, I don't know. Um, so why did you, why can't, why can't we wait until next year? The state wasn't going to make you do it until next year. What, what, you know, so next year, 2024, the same four people that are in our clerk's office will be running a presidential election, and a primary, maybe, and a spring election. Those elections take up all of their time, all of their time. They're also responsible for their reassessments and all the border review stuff that happens this year. Um, so why don't you hire more people? Because we can't hire more people, because we are fiscally prudent in everything that we do. Just, right? And the values of the homes probably would have been higher in 2025 than they were this year, which would have meant there would have been a bigger shift of property levy shifted to residential properties. The values trail by a year or two, because they use previous valuations. And until residential prices come down, um, that's going to be the expectation, that residential property owners will pay a larger share of the total tax burden. And that's not right, and that causes heartburn, and that causes headaches, and that causes financial difficulty for everyone. I get that.
Okay. Uh, citizen commentary, Mr. La Souza, we're, we're going to still wait for you, because we got a public hearing. Public hearing under J1, public hearing, a special use permit for Cold Stone Creamery Proposed Limited Service Restaurant, typically located 4973 South 76th Street, submitted by Newman Assad, doing business as Nitty Creamery. This includes a resolution for the special use permit, as well as a site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, Cold Stone Creamery is proposing to move into the city and occupy about fifteen hundred square feet of the former Fox World Travel Space. This property is Zone C4, which permits limited service restaurants as a special use permit, hence the public hearing this evening. Their proposed hours of operation are ten to ten weekdays and ten to eleven weekend. Uh, the site in totality requires fifty-nine parking spaces. Fifty are provided. I do believe there's a cross-access easement agreement with Ascension to the north as well. Definitely sufficient parking. The technicality shortage is something the county council may waive. It's in the resolution. Uh, the landlord has been contacted regarding some missing landscaping. Uh, the planning commission asked it be installed by October of this year, or if, uh, he's having a hard time getting the materials, that a letter of intent be submitted that'll be planted in the spring. Planning commission recommended approval at their August 8th meeting. We've received no letters of objection or support to date.
Is anyone that would like to speak for or against your informational purposes concerning this item? Is anyone that would like to speak for or against your informational purposes concerning this item? An entertaining motion to close session?
No.
Or, and the public hearing, sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing.
That would make more sense.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, second by Elder Person Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as well as the site plan review.
Make a motion to approve A and B as presented.
By Elder Person Castner, reserve second. Second by Elder Person Bailey. Just one quick thing with regard to the pylon sign. That's been grandf, it's not being addressed? It's not being made to come into conformance?
Yes, at the planning, command, planning commission level, that was discussed.
I just want to...
Definitely lots of time for a landlord to do that, yeah.
So it's not being made a, a condition of any of this?
It was at the planning commission meeting.
But then we said that it shouldn't be. Is it? No.
At this mo, I'm, I'm sorry.
Is it part of the special use resolution that is...
No, signage is planning commission, not council.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there isn't a condition that within two years...
It is not. No, I see what you're asking. It's not, no.
Resolution followed the planning commission's wishes.
Yes, okay. Very good. Would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwiki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Castner?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Uh, item J2, A and B is a public hearing, a special use permit for Maria Yamady Coffee Proposed Limited Service, Service Restaurant at 4818 South 76th Street, submitted by Ahmad Nadi, doing business ETN engineering. Uh, so this is to approve a resolution for the special use permit, as well as approve the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This tenant, this proposed tenant is, um, would like to open up a coffee shop. They do have, um, businesses in Michigan, Illinois, Ohio, California, and Texas. They would occupy about thirty-one hundred square feet of the multi-tenant commercial building, which is Zone C4. The proposed hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Originally, they had asked till midnight. Planning commission requested that be reduced to 11:00 PM to be consistent with other businesses in the area. Uh, they also are proposing outdoor seating area and installation of a door on the east side of the building for easy access in and out of the, in and out of the restaurants. The totality for parking of all uses on site is a hundred four spaces. Seventy-seven are provided. Again, that's something that waiver, county council may approve, as is noted in the resolution. Planning commission recommended approval at their August 8th meeting. We've received no letters of objection or support to date.
Great. Is anyone that would like to speak for or against informational purposes concerning this item? Is anyone that would like to speak for or against informational purposes concerning this item? An entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Elder Person Akers, is there a second? Second, thank you. By Elder Person Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And entertain a motion to approve the resolution, the site plan.
Motion to approve.
By Elder Person Castner, second by Elder Person Bailey. Would you please call?
Elder Person Juzwiki?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Castner?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Uh, item three, public hearing, a special use permit for Petco for veterinary service, located at 49...
Item 3, public hearing of special use permit for Petco for veterinary service located at 4950 South 76th Street. This is also a resolution for a special use permit as well as a site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Petco is an existing retail store on 76th Street. They are proposing to operate veterinary services within. They will not be operated, operate independently. It will be part of the Petco corporate services. They do lease about 18,000 square feet of that entire building, shared with Skyzone. The hours for the vet will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily, and they're estimating adding about 10 to 15 employees just for this veterinary service. The landlord's been contacted regarding some missing landscaping. Same case, if it can't be done this fall, we're asking for it to be done in the spring. Planning commission recommended approval at their August 8th meeting, and we've received no letters of support or objection to date.
Okay, thanks. Just with regard to the hours of operation, I know for Petco, do they want to, because these are their firm hours of operation, till 5? If the corporate guys in the future say, "We want to stay up until 7", or something, do you want to extend it from 8 to 7? Just in the event? Or not?
I would say yeah, because we did hire the second vet, so we're going to have two. So I wonder if they would-
Eight to eight? What time do you close?
We're going to close at 9.
So eight to eight?
Yeah.
Okay. So otherwise, we have to go through all this again?
I don't know. Why are we going 8, not 9?
Because I think you would have, I've been thinking you want to make appointments right up till 9, but I guess that you could operate till 9.
I have no problem till 9. We got 24-hour veterinary services in our city.
Let's just do 8 to 8 for now. Or 8 to 9, whatever you guys think.
8 to 9.
8 to 9? Okay, we'll just during your regular business hours, okay? All right. Does any else want to speak for or against informational purposes concerning this item? We have a representative from Petco in the audience and a Greenfield resident, I'm told. Does anyone else want to speak for or against informational purposes concerning this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Elder Person Castner.
Second.
Second by Elder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Does council wish to take any action with regard to the resolution and the site plan?
I make a motion to approve the resolution and site plan with the adjustment to 8 to 9.
Okay. Motion by Elder Person Castner, is there a second? Second by Elder Person Bailey, would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Castner. Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item K, old business. I don't have any appointments this evening. Under L, new business. L1 is a notice of injury received from Hoopie and Abraham SC on behalf of Michael Trotter by William Trotter and Lexi Besaw, Besaw for Tracy Dorpat. That's been provided to our insurers and legal counsel. Item 2 is claim received from Nikki Cooper, referred to her city attorney.
Yes.
Item 3, applications for licenses for 2023 and 2024 operator licenses. Entertain a motion to approve, approve-
Motion to approve.
Preconditions and conditions. Motion by Akers, second by Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 4 is approval of an application for temporary Class B retailer's license received from Harley's owner group. The Milwaukee chapter sells fermented malt beverages indoors at a swap meet for service and parts on September 23rd, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the House of Harley. That includes the approval to allow underage individuals on the licensed beer premises pursuant to statutes 125.07, parent 3, parent A, 12. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Jezwicky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item 5 is approval of amendment to the city's TDS phone system agreement to accommodate moving to a new network connection. Entertain a motion to approve. If you have any questions, Mr. McDonald is here.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Jezwicky. Would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Castner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 6 and 7, we'll take together. This is approve cost-sharing memo of understanding with the city of Milwaukee for the design of the power line trail as well as approve a cost-sharing memo of understanding with the city of Milwaukee for the construction of the power line trail phase.
Two.
Two?
Two.
Two. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Castner. Second by Elder Person Akers. Would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Castner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 8 is adopt an ordinance amending section 8.04 of the Greenfield municipal code regarding parking restrictions on South 27th Street. Entertain a motion to approve. This is no parking, stopping, or standing.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, second by Elder Person Akers. This is critically important with trucks unloading in the right lane.
Have we fixed the problem on Loomis with the signage?
With the what?
With the signage on Loomis. Has that problem been fixed there?
Which one?
By Starbucks.
Yeah, there's a sign like this by Starbucks on Loomis because it was the same problem.
No standing, stopping, or parking, so-
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if that was fixed, that helped.
So there are other places in the city that they probably should go?
76th Street, Clayton Avenue, Highway 100. They're already there on Highway 100 by the car dealerships. This is an important one because it alleviates the problems of cars unloading in the traffic.
Yeah, I'm quite familiar with that on the other side of the street.
So historically, two people have died as a result, you know?
Highway 100, definitely, yeah.
So this is why this is important.
It doesn't now apply to buses, though.
Doesn't apply to buses. By state law, it doesn't apply to that.
No, I know.
Or emergency vehicles. What you call?
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey. Elder Person Castner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 9 is adopt a resolution recognizing International Migratory Bird Day and authorizing the Pollinator Protection Committee to continue participation in the Wisconsin Bird City program. I'd entertain a motion to approve this by Elder Person Bailey.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey. Is there a second? Second by Elder Person Jezwicky. Would you please call?
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Castner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Item 10, approve a certified survey map. This item's going to be held. This is on 76th Street. There's some confusion. Is that 10? 10, right?
72nd.
Huh?
72nd.
72nd Street.
What did I say?
76.
76?
You said 6.
Did I really? Good God, I'm losing my mind.
What mind?
South 72nd Street, which is right next door over here. We want to make sure that both parties agree to the certified survey map. So it'll be on hold until an agreement or satisfactory proof is provided that both parties agree.
That's a scary sound.
So a lot of people are wondering, Ed Meyer, they had the bomb squad over there previously. Couple of weeks ago, there was actually a smoke detector going off in the dumpster. That was what that was about, in case anybody wants to know. I hope it's not on fire.
I'm hoping it's that equipment she's running out there.
All right. So that'll be placed on a future agenda. Keep in contact with Christie with regard to the status. We'll put it back on, I guess. We won't table it. We'll put it back on when it's necessary, okay? Item 11, approve site landscaping architectural plans for Leighton Preserver. Proposed new construction multifamily development to be located at 4501 South 99th Street, submitted by the Horizon Group.
If I could, I just want to make mention that the Plan Commission saw a site plan that requested a waiver of five feet for the balconies encroaching in the north, north side yard setback, which faces the freeway. The building itself is within the required setback, but the balconies encroach five feet. There were some adjustments that had to be made to the site plan just in the last week. One of them being, including a sidewalk along the exterior of the apartment building at the request of the fire department. And this has forced a little bit of a shift of the buildings. Now requesting a different setback variance for the southern building. And let me just open this. A visual is better, sorry. I just wanted to make note because the minutes of the Plan Commission would not accurately reflect the site plan that modified just a little bit. So the areas in the red bubble are requesting a little bit of a setback variance, again, just for the balcony. So I just wanted to be upfront that the setback variance is modifying today versus what the Plan Commission saw last week. It should not impact anyone in any shape or form. This is setback so far from Leighton Avenue, but it is necessary.
Or Chapman.
Oh, I asked them to fix that. They forgot to fix them.
Are the condo, are the condo folks aware of the adjustments? Have you been talking? I just want to make sure that you guys are aware. How about the, okay.
Is that officially going to be Chapman Street now?
It's going to be a street. Yeah. Which means the city will be responsible for the operation, the maintenance and the snow plowing.
And 99th Street also?
99th and Chapman will both be public streets.
Be public street.
There's a sidewalk that goes from the, from there to Leighton, right? Does that go all the way through? And the maintenance of that is, it's a Horizon thing? It's not a city thing. So it'd be borne by the adjacent property owner by ordinance? It's not a city thing to, we don't plow or shovel sidewalks.
Unless it's a park. Unless it's Conco Park.
Unless it's a park or some, yeah.
Or overpasses.
Huh?
Director Bob McCag with Rise Development, 3900 South Prairie Hill Lane, Greenfield, Wisconsin, 53228. It will be part of the right-of-way, but typical to ordinance, we will maintain it like any other property owner.
So that would have to be, well, it'd have to be done by agreement with respect to the property that's not adjacent to yours?
Based on that, we haven't had an amended draft since the change, but I'm assuming that's what the draft development agreement will read, that the maintenance of that sidewalk will be only for Horizon, not the existing property owners.
Office building here.
Correct.
Right.
And I'm assuming that we would only maintain up to that, like?
We would only maintain within, so we, we don't maintain driveway approaches? We plow?
Just go to that end there and, yeah.
Right? Yep. It's just like a street. And we're, I think we're still working, I don't know if that's the appropriate T at the end? Hmm?
Still working it.
Okay. So the final drawing will be consistent with DPW? Right? So that we can-
Motion for approval.
Motion by Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Jezwicky. Okay.
Think it'll be a nice development for our city.
I think so.
Without any city funding.
And it keeps a significant amount of the green space, even though you can't build on it, available, so. Okay. What you call? Yeah, call.
Elder Person Jezwicky.
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey.
Aye.
Elder Person Castner.
Aye.
Elder Person Akers.
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian.
Aye.
Okay. Item 12 is, thank you. Item 12 is approve a special use review and site plan review for Perez Automotive. This is at 3320 West Howard Avenue. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Jezwicky, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 13, I think we should hold this one off for another. Sorry, man. I would, if I would have known, if I knew you were coming, I would have. It has.
They're all the same length.
Some are longer than others. Is there a full moon?
There is.
Is there seriously a full moon?
No, there's no item light still.
Huh? In 10 days? Wow.
It feels like it.
Somebody needs to tell some people lately because it seems like it's been a full moon. Item 13, approve a certified survey map for proposed loss split at a portion of 108, 11800 and 11802 West Edgerton, submitted by Jeffrey Katz, city engineer.
Did you want me to make a motion to approve so we can discuss it?
Make a motion to approve by Elder Person Akers, Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Bailey. Just under discussion, Mr. La Souza's an adjacent property owner. He's the house down there, and his property goes up.
I'm next door to the project there. In any event. I guess I've got, please excuse my voice. My summer allergies this year have just killed me. In 1981, the city entered into a reciprocal easement agreement with my property and the property under question here for maintenance and whatever was necessary to maintain and keep working the sewer and water, which was installed in 1981. In May of 1990, I prepaid the city of Greenfield $11,255.29 for a deferred sewer and water main assessment created by the city along with that easement in 1981. A similar assessment, deferred assessment, was placed on the property next to me, which includes where that sewer and water run, which is part of what the easement is. The assessment for my property was the property that I owned that was bordering West Carpenter Avenue and proposed South 118th Street, north of West Holmes Avenue, which is currently still area dedicated for street purposes. My personal homestead is connected to the sewer and water through the Village of Hale's Corners. That's the only way I could get a permit for it, even though my main residence is in the city of Greenfield. The city's recent and proposed actions here seem to preclude street development of West Carpenter and South 118th Street. I think that should be pretty obvious here. Just keep in mind that a similar assessment to the one that I paid was made against the Bright Life property, and such assessment, to my knowledge, as of this date, remains unpaid. I did not see it recorded in the register of deeds, as was mine. This is even though Bright Life is directly benefiting from this sewer and water situation that borders their property. I am requesting, because it doesn't appear that 118th or Carpenter is going to be developed as was set forth in the deferred assessment and the agreement, of units per acre that was previously approved and unanimously approved by the city. This current proposal involves almost a third of an acre of the 12.64 acres that were previously approved for development. The ZAC property, which was submitted as part of the original and approved plan, consists of approximately 1.26 acres. This land remains assessed at $17,000. This was part of the proposal that there would be townhouses there and that this would be considered as one parcel. And I think that approval by the city hinged on the fact that there were X number of acres and they could keep it within the PUD limits for density. The current developments in building that has gone on, on the property at Bright Life there, seem to preclude developments to the land for the ZAC property, which was part of the original proposal, the 1.26 acres. I would ask that the common council create, I mean, the ZAC property created a 9% deficit in usable land from the approved density given by the council. I would request that the ZAC property be assessed appropriately as part of the development. In the alternative, the city should demand a completion date for the six townhouses. That is about all that I have right now, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. So what you're asking, so what we're trying to do is I'm asking her if she's got that pretty much verbatim.
Yes.
It'll be in the recording.
So just because there is some, those are questions that are well beyond my?
Well, without hitting at the top of your head, yeah.
Right.
There's like six of them in there.
Look, Alderman Castner, I appreciate your interest in improving the neighborhood and providing a path there and such, but I would suggest that just to stay above the appearance of a conflict of interest, you have an immediate family member that's residing at Bright Life right now. And perhaps you might, you may want to, you may not want to, it's entirely up to you.
And a conflict of interest would be what?
The benefit of implementing a walking path and complete access to the nature pod.
Thank you for your concern, but my mind might be dead by the time it's constructed. So I don't see the conflict.
I mean, so this is essentially talking about the pink piece right here?
Yes.
It's not talking about, I mean, some of the things that you brought up refer to the parcel immediately to the, I guess it's your left or the west, which is like there's a rectangle, an old kind of narrow road. That's where you're talking about, the townhomes, right there, right?
Yes, yes. That's part of the ZAC property there.
Right.
That was included as part of the official approved plan there.
And then the other thing that you brought up is getting your 11,800 or 600 with regard to this right-of-way here, right?
Um.
Right there. Is that right? That's your house?
Yeah. The only part I'm addressing at this point is that portion that is north of what would have been Holmes Avenue to Carpenter Avenue. And that portion of Carpenter Avenue that is part of my parcel. I'm not talking about anything else as far as the right-of-way goes. That was part of the original.
And I apologize, we're going to have to kind of get that, those questions sort of.
Yeah. The other question I have here is, is that you're only asking for 30 feet here. The original dedication that was given by my parcel to the city in 1967 was for 60 feet. And I don't know, you're going to have a strip there that's kind of in the middle of nowhere or something. I'm not sure how that's going to work out.
No, the strip on the north, shown in pink, is 60 feet wide.
My strip, or the one that is dedicated from my property is 60 feet. And you will be dedicating 60 feet of the Bright Life property, is that correct?
I don't know the answer.
I think Mr. Castner prepared most of this.
Is it a question whether the pink kind of goes further to the right?
Well.
And that's that?
You have a 60-foot easement and part of the reason for that easement is?
For a road.
For a road. And to maintain your sewer and water connections and everything else there. The problem is there probably will never be a road there, pretty clearly by what we've put up.
But there will be a sewer there. There is a sewer there, right?
There was initially in agreement to maintain that sewer and water between the landowners, the part that I own and what was to become the Bright Life property. There was a reciprocal easement that was entered into in 1981.
So you're agreeing to maintain that sewer there then?
Where the city agrees to maintain it and we allow them in to do whatever they need to do to do it.
So if the city has to put a path or a asphalt path to maintain that sewer, that's not?
I'm not sure if that's part of it or not, but I do know that before the dedication or the gift to the city for street purposes, that gift was made in 1967. And, I mean.
So that'll require, that'll probably require a little bit more research.
Yes, yes.
And we'll have to get into it.
Yeah. There are a couple of questions that you may want to look at there.
But the only thing, the only thing that's, and I kind of don't want to stray too far from the item that's on the agenda, the only thing that we're talking about is removing the pink piece on this triangle from the Great Life prop, this pink piece right there? That's all we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Removing that from the big Great Life prop.
Yeah.
That's all we're talking about.
The north 30 feet, correct.
Sixty feet. The north's 60 feet.
It is 60 feet?
Yes.
All right. Alderman Castner advised me it was 30 feet earlier today. I'm sorry.
I think it's 60.
I'll inform you, it'd be the same as yours. The lines kind of match up there.
Whatever yours is, it is.
Okay.
Okay. So we're trying to get that, and that would be the city property?
60.
Right?
It says 60 on this.
I understand. And with that action, we kind of.
So your questions relate to the east side?
Set aside any hope of using that for road purposes, which was described in the initial assessment, the deferred assessment that was placed on my property.
I think it's fair to say that there will never be a road that extends east from the existing West Carpenter Avenue.
Agreed.
But that the right-of-way and the easements associated with that are necessary to maintain the water and sewer that, or the sewer that's there. The only thing that changes this is now the city owns this part, this portion. That's all that changes.
It was a neighborhood promising.
The city didn't buy this to put a road in.
They have access to the high school.
The city bought this to provide a permanent easement to its, or access to its sewers and its utilities that are underground there, and to extend a path system from West Carpenter Avenue to the rail system at Whitman.
It's kind of saving lives.
Excuse me. The easement for the maintenance of the sewer and water lines was in place for both parcels prior to, prior to your action here tonight.
Right. That is true.
And the assessment for those improvements to both my property and to the Bright Life property.
So you're saying, can I have my money back for the assessments that were previously made to service that northern portion, port?
That's correct. And nothing was ever collected that I can tell, at least from a cursory look at the Register of Deeds, that any release of that deferred assessment ever took place, or any receipt of it, or that it doesn't travel with the chain of title there.
I would, I would support refunding the assessment that he paid for the sewer until potentially someday he ever hooks up to it.
I'm not sure how you ever hook up to it.
You'd put a long driveway in and build a house back there and soak up to the sewer. I mean, we're talking 50 years, 20 years, but it could happen.
Great Life could buy your property and put, and load that entire strip of woods right now with more, right?
That's a possibility as well.
Price is right, you would.
So I don't know. Okay. So with regard to the CSM last split, anything else you got? We're going to have to transcribe this so we understand. I think we know where you're coming from now.
All right. Thank you for your time.
I didn't know where you were. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. What'd you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
I just want to be clear with regard to this recusal thing. I mean, if the city attorney were here, I don't see you having any financial interest whatsoever.
I don't either.
In the splitting of a CSM to provide a path that's adjacent to a place that your mom lives in.
Sad to say, by the time it gets constructed.
But if you want to recuse yourself, the motion, the motion has passed unanimously, or if you want the minutes to reflect that, I, I mean, it's up to you. I mean, I'm not the attorney, so I'm not trying to make.
Neither am I, and I'm not insisting on it.
I just don't want, I don't want you to, you know, somebody to go, well, you know, he voted for that trail because his mom lives in that. I mean, I'm not sure your mom is going to hike up there and go on the trail. I don't know what your mom, I don't even know your, I don't think I've ever met, I met your mom once.
You haven't met her when my dad died.
Just recuse herself, so there isn't an issue.
I will recuse myself.
And entertain a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
By Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson, are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Would you please recall, redo the vote?
Did you want a new motion or?
A new motion to approve the CSM would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
By Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Druswicki, would you please do a roll?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Present, recuse.
Obstein.
Recuse yourself.
Obstein. Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Motion carries for, all right.
Let's see the reason.
Item 14, approve an ordinance amending section 22.02 of the municipal code pertaining to state code reference in chapter 22, heating and ventilation. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Druswicki, would you please do a roll?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Present, recuse.
Upstain.
Recuse yourself.
Upstain. Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Motion carries for, all right.
Let's see the reason.
Item 14, approve an ordinance amending section 22.02 of the municipal code pertaining to state code reference in chapter 22, heating and ventilation. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Druswicki, would you please call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Item 15, approve a special, outdoor special event application for built rights, 95th Anniversary Family Fund Day on October 1st. Entertain a motion to approve.
I have bought furniture from them. What do I do about that?
So have I.
You're in excellent business.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Druswicki, is there a second?
Can we vote?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Don't go to the party then. We can't go now. We voted.
All right. Item 16, an outdoor special event application for a house, a Harley and Matic and the K-9, for a K-9 event on October 7th. Entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, this replaces an OSE that was on last month's agenda.
Okay.
It was going to be on October 14th, and it was called Pet Fest for Matic and K-9 units. It is now.
On October 7th instead.
On October 7th.
So the 14th one that was approved is gone.
Is canceled, correct.
So this is moving it up a week. I'd entertain a motion.
Again, I like dogs. Do I have to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Druswicki, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 18, approve an agreement between the State of Wisconsin Department of Health Services and the Greenfield Fire Department for the EMS Leave Behind Program. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Alderperson Druswicki, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Akers, would you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19, discussion decision on renewal of shared services agreement. I'd entertain a motion to approve. This is just the sharing the ser, the equipment. This is if one of our engines goes down, we can borrow somebody else's.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, second by Alderperson Castner, would you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye. Since our trucks are how many years out still, two?
So what, just consistent, so a couple of you weren't at the finance committee meeting recently, so there was an opportunity to Pierce makes, and this, I'll go back to mayor's report for this story.
I'm aware of, it's a demo or.
So what they, what Pierce does, what the manufacturers are doing, they're making stock vehicles.
Yeah, I've heard.
And there were two stock trucks available that could have been delivered by the year end, and it would be better because of the engine tech, the diesel technology, as opposed to the new stuff that's coming and all sorts of other things. And they would have been less expensive, but it requires a quick purchase. I mean, like, we, you have, okay, there's two of them, if you want them, you got to get them now. As we explained, in next year's budget, I didn't put 600 or 700, whatever it is, thousand, hundred thousand dollars into the budget for a truck, because if we were to order a truck, it would be about 24 to 28 months out, as I understand it. And I can't, it's not coming from the levy. That's likely going to be a trust fund loan or some sort of borrowing, a 10-year note to buy that truck. So what I basically going to do in the event that these trucks are available in the future, stock trucks, right, I'm going to call in some sort of a quick meeting and say, I need to, I need the authority to buy these things, and then we can worry about the financing later. That's the only way to get the turnaround, to get the truck less expensively and quicker, using the right diesel technology, just so you.
So the ones, those stock trucks that you talked about are gone now?
They were, last for like four or five days and they're gone.
Okay.
So everybody is kind of in the same situation we are.
Okay.
We have a different problem with the dump trucks. Those things have gone up to be over $320,000, I think was the number. They used to be $165,000. And there's no guarantee of price, and they're two to three years out. So I don't know what we're going to do with that. That's another, so there's no funding for those in the budget, because I'm not going to set aside.
Relate.
And they didn't have the money anyway, so it didn't matter. Okay. So, sorry for that, is that a regression or digression?
Die.
Digression. Sorry for that digression. Okay. Did we call on that one?
Yep.
Okay. 20, and I want to make this as long as possible, so the guy from the parking wreck has to sit there a little bit longer. Are you hourly or salaried?
Salaryed.
See, it doesn't matter. I can do this. Sorry, man, I didn't mean it. All right. 20, discussion decision regarding contract allowing for the continuation of the stockbox program. That's why you're here, right? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
By Akers, second by Sarian. Do you have any questions for him? I have some.
You're not allowed to ask.
I don't have any. All right. What'd you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
All right. 21, a succession decision regarding the grant for the Christmas Santa float. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So Santa can cruise. I'll make that motion.
Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Alderperson Druswicki, would you call?
Did we?
I just want you to know that if you vote against this contract, you're voting against Christmas.
But if you like Christmas, can we vote?
And Santa Claus.
Did we get a discount because we gave them an award last year? Did not get a discount because of that. Damn.
We didn't get an inflationary price adjustment, though.
All right.
Fair enough.
There's that.
Still not as much as the award cost, but I'm just, just kidding. I always find that, the, those awards are really cheap and.
Hey, hey, they're gold-plated with nickel.
Paint plated. Yeah, I'm just kidding. All right. Motion was amazing. What'd you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Item 22, discussion decision to approve a memorandum of understanding with the city of Greenfield Health Department, Court's Health Solution.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
By Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Druswicki, would you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.
Items 23, 24, 25, and 26, I'll take together. Those are schedules of dispersments, mileage, reimbursements, investments and reinvestments, and financial savings. Entertain a motion to approve all four items.
I move for approval.
Alderperson Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Druswicki, would you call?
Alderperson Juswicki.
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey.
Aye.
Alderperson Castner.
Aye.
Alderperson Akers.
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian.
Aye.